Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna, we are coming back from the closed-door session. Before we close the closed-door session, please let the record show that Commissioner Merker did join us upstairs before the meeting started, though he showed, he wasn't here when we started down here, but he did join us at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, so we'll, thank you. We'll terminate the closed-door session and go to call the regular City Commission meeting of June 2nd to order. If we could have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joe Casello?
Here.
Commissioner David Merker?
Yes, 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 I'm cleaning the table.
Here.
Commissioner Mike McRae? Here.
Thank you. We begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Commissioner Matt McRae, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Commissioner Fitzpatrick. If you please rise.
Let us pray. Our most holy eternal God, Lord the Creator and Maker of all mankind, Father, we come this afternoon to do business for the city of Boynton, but we come first recognizing that without you, we're nothing, without you, we're nobody. We ask that you give us more love and most of all, will we make decisions from the deus that reflects all of the citizens of Boynton, that we will be mindful of what we do, what we say, and how we say it, and how we react. All these blessed asks, why, because you continue to live in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to agenda approval. I would like the commission to add, under announcements and community special events, item D is a proclamation for the National Garden Week. We came in after the agenda was printed, but we do have that tonight. That'll be item D, proclamation for National Garden Week. And also, under, under legal, item C, we'll remove that from the agenda. That situation has been resolved, so we don't have to address it. That's item C, under legal. You can take that off your agenda.
Is that possible?
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody else have anything to add or delete from the agenda?
I'd like to pull out of the consent agenda, I'd like to pull 6F, Mr. Mayor.
6F, okay. Anybody else? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, second.
Motion's second. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. I show the motion unanimous. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Tonight, I'll start with Commissioner McRae.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to say, on Saturday afternoon, I was fortunate, along with the rest of you all, to attend the International Children's Oasis International over at Ben Bonito's, where we honored one of our own chief, Latasha Clemmons. I was concerned, when I got there, I did not see our fire chief. I was concerned, I did not see this system, but when I got back and asked questions, I found out that the chief had surgery. Found out the other one is on a 10-day vacation in Alaska. I'm just saying, I like to, before I form opinions about anybody, to make sure that I do my research and make sure that I have everything I need in order before I speak. So Chief, I do understand why you wasn't there. Let the other gentleman know, continue to vacation in Alaska and enjoy himself. Thank you.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yours truly also was at the Children Oasis, but I'd like to comment. I'd like to comment on Beth Ann and Ray Whitley. A true class act. They hit home, if you think back to your youth, on what they were trying to do. In history, all groups of people who've come to America to appreciate America want their children to improve, get educated, and most important, appreciate and love the United States of America. What Beth Ann and Ray Whitley did, the effort that they did, was that wonderful. As I stated, it was a class act. So I'd just like to thank them for their effort, and I'd like all of us to think back of what we experienced with our families, whether or not they came to America from Europe or South America or anywhere. The wonderful thing about America is that we can all have a wonderful life. That's part A. Part B is Latasha Clemmons. Who is this woman? She's intelligent, she's hardworking, and she's that ambitious. Latasha Clemmons makes the city of Boynton Beach a proud place for all of us to live and respect. Congratulations and much success as a chief, and I hope her other achievements, ideas of what she wants in her life, I'm sure she will succeed at. And thank you, Latasha Clemmons, for being Latasha Clemmons.
Vice Mayor Casello?
Yes, congratulations to the Whitleys. They do a great job with their foundation, they do some great work down there in Jamaica. I also like to say that the fire department was a well-representative chief there, and Chief Murphy did an outstanding job in his little speech, so you should be commended on that. I also met with Michael Weiner the past couple of weeks. We had lunch, talked about the health and well-being of our great city, Boynton Beach.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
The things of most importance since the June 19th meeting was I attended the Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. I went to the Memorial Day ceremony at the cemetery. Vice Mayor Casello and Merker and the mayor were there, and I attended also Captain, soon-to-be Battalion Chief Clemmons' recognition lunch.
Thank you. City manager, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have nothing to add, what's already been said, so we'll move on.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There's one other thing I do need to say, and that is, I'd like to say to our city manager, Lori Laverre, and also to the chief, without the two of you, Latasha Clemmons would not be where she is today. I'm just saying, and I really want to say thank you for, you know, seeing the foresight in her to promote her, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Next is announcement by Recreation Parks Director Wally Majors about the Wacky Water
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Wally Majors, Recreation and Parks Director. As I often mention, once a month, we do, I have an event that we organize for the entire family to come out and enjoy and be healthy. Our event this month is Wacky Water Day, which will be held June 13th from 10:00 a.m. till noon at the Denson Pool. A lot of fun, crazy games in the water, healthy snacks, and we hope you can join us. Thank you.
Next, there'll be a Joint City CRA Special Meetings and Workshop for Strategic Planning on the following dates at the Intercoastal Park Clubhouse. Tuesday, June 16th, 2015, beginning at 9:00 a.m. That's Tuesday, June 16th, 2015, beginning at 9:00 a.m. On Wednesday, June 17th, 2015, beginning at 1:30. So if you picked up an agenda, it'll say 9:00 a.m. on there. We need to correct that. That Wednesday, on June 17th, becoming at 1:30 p.m. Okay? I have a proclamation that I'm going to read next for the Lakewood Drainage District for its 100th anniversary, and I was given who was going to accept that, and I don't know what I did with it here.
Mr. Patrick Martin will accept it.
If you'll join me at the, if you'll join me there, thank you.
Bad things, isn't they? Forget me at work, too, so it's okay.
I just found it, Patrick, underneath all my pile of stuff here, so Patrick Martin will accept it. Whereas, as the Lakewood Drainage District is a political subdivision of the state of Florida, encompassing 200 square miles of Palm Beach County, consisting of a population of over 700,000, and which operates and manages 20 major water control structures in approximately 500 miles of drainage canals and associated rights of ways. And whereas, on June 15th, 1915, the establishment of the Lakewood Drainage District was approved by the Florida Legislature and the landowners within its jurisdictional boundaries. And whereas, the Lakewood Drainage District, with its Board of Supervisors, management and employees, have faithfully served the residents, the agricultural community, and other commercial entities within its jurisdiction by providing safe and consistent flood control and water supply for the past 100 years. Whereas, the Lakewood Drainage District continues to play an integral role in the economic growth and development of Palm Beach County as a desirable location for residents and businesses. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, do proclaim Lakewood Drainage District 100th anniversary. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the second day of June 2015. Congratulations, 100 years, it's a long time.
Yeah. That's pretty good for 100, isn't it? Just kidding. Thank you, I'll thank the council members and the city of Boynton Beach. I want you to know that we have a very good working relationship with your management and your staff. They're excellent people. I'm not so certain about Mr. Fitzpatrick, but we try. He's always trying to put a bike path in our right of way, and we keep going at it, but we really do thank you for that. I do want to invite the council to our centennial celebration. It's June 17th, 8:30 in the morning. It's a light breakfast, and we hope that you can make it. As stated, we have been providing water supply and flood protection for over 100 years. It's been a real delight to work for the district, and we can't thank you enough for this proclamation. So with that, thank you very much.
Next, I will ask Mary Scheitler to join me from the Boynton Beach Garden Club. Evening, Mary. Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. And whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers, and work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. And whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. And whereas gardening furnishes a challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning, as well as those having years of experience, and gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardening enables members of the garden clubs across the nation and the world to make a world of difference in the communities where they reside and work. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, to hereby proclaim June 7th through the 13th, 2015, as National Garden Week. A witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the second day of June 2015. Mary, thank you for all your effort.
I want to say that the Boynton Beach Garden Club is trying to get more involved with projects with the city, and we're working with the parks, Glendale Hall and that, and also, we have a project going on at the library next Tuesday in the children's library, planting flowers for the children to take home with them. Thank you very much, we really appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay. It's good, they're teaching the kids to plant flowers, that's great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, I missed that, they pulled G out of the consent agenda. I missed that.
Okay.
If you'd accommodate me.
Motion to reapprove the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, show the motion unanimous. Next, we'll go to public audience. Anybody in the public which addressed the commission items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask you to come to one of the podiums, give your name and address for the record. Try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Lulu DeCamera, 836 East Drive. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and Commissioners. I'm Secretary of INCA, Inland Cove Association, and I've noticed lately that some of the sprinklers on North Federal Highway have been repaired and are now working, thanks to Jeff Livergood and his staff. Hopefully, all of them will be repaired, so the foliage that's planted will thrive. A big issue with me is the garbage in the city. With regard to the garbage along both sides of North Federal Highway and in the medians, I would respectfully request that our city manager, Lori Laverri, and city attorney, Jim Cheroff, if they could check into the contract that the city has with the landscaping company regarding any stipulation to pick up trash, and if there is no mention, could it possibly be included in future contracts? Those companies have the orange and yellow vests and the orange cones for protection to accomplish the job. I have been a resident of Boynton for a half-century, and I am concerned about our city as a whole. I would be remiss if I did not mention the garbage along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, particularly between the FEC Railroad and Seacrest Boulevard. Several of those lots are owned by the CRA, but that area, along with our neighborhoods in INCA and North Federal Highway, is in the CRA District. It can be hard to understand the CRA giving grants to businesses existing and new and not putting funds toward maintenance and upkeep. However, CRA Director Vivian Brooks has explained to us that the CRA's charter does not allow maintenance to be budgeted. I believe there is a connection between garbage and crime, and it's also a health hazard. And I was wondering if it would be possible for either Public Works, Wreckin' Parks, or the city to come up with some sort of an advertising campaign, program, signs, et cetera, to help get this issue under control and regain the positive image we want for our city. And I truly thank you, gentlemen, for your consideration.
Hello, my name is Jeff King, Mariner Village, 743-8 Northeast, 12th Terrace, Boynton Beach. And I'd like to follow up on what Lulu just commented on. We're both members of INCA. President Harry Woodworth is in Alaska. I heard somebody mention Alaska. He's on vacation, or else he would have been here. I just want to say how happy I am to see that there's finally some attention being paid to US One, and I see a lot of, a lot of good things happening. On the very north side, the medians have been redone, front of Peninsula. I'm a Realtor, I sell a lot of units there. That was kind of a sore thumb, but it's been, it's had a major renovation on the very northern side. With that said, we took down a lot of the power poles, the old poles. The sidewalks have been improved a lot on the southern side, closer to Boynton Beach With that said, we do have one area that we're still really concerned about, and that's in front of the U-Haul. Jeffrey Katz, the chief, came and talked to us two or three weeks ago. David Merker was at our meeting, that was our monthly meeting, and we had a big discussion on the parking situation in front of the U-Haul. Other than the fact that it's an eyesore, we believe it's a big safety concern. You've got, this is at the north on Federal Highway, just prior to the C-16 Canal Bridge. So first of all, you've got a bridge going over the canal, so coming, traffic coming south, you can't really see what's on the other side of the bridge. You've got big U-Haul trucks and cars parking bumper to bumper. You can't, you can't really see if somebody's coming out of that driveway or not. You've got people coming in and out of South and North Road. It's a really bad area, somebody's going to get hurt or killed there eventually. Now, I have called Chief Katz, when he was there, said, "Well, you need to call and tell us when there's an issue." So I've personally called about three times. To the non-emergency number, immediately someone picks the phone up, and within five or 10 minutes, they go out. I've talked to three officers, and every time they go out, they basically say, "Jeff, you're right, it's not, it's not good, it's a bad situation, but nobody's illegally parked." Now, Lulu looked up on, I guess it was a state statute or a city statute about where you can park and where you can't park. There are no dedicated parking spots there. Some, just south of there, you've got areas that are lined off where you cannot park, like in front of AmeriGas and Jan's Jewelers. So the two policemen, two of the three policemen said, "If you're interested in changing the parking regulations, come to the City Commission and explain the issue." So I'm explaining it.
Well, let me just state that, at our last meeting, the president of INCA came, and he talked about the same thing, and told about the meeting, and he complimented us on what was been done and how improved it was. He said it was great, they were good, and hope it kept up. And I can tell you, I've been up and down there four or five times up Federal Highway. I particularly look at that, because it was brought to our attention, and every time I've looked, there's been no trucks on Federal Highway parking there, they're not parked there. So I assume that they were still taken up. Now, it's, you know, it's something you gotta stay on top of all the time, because if they can get away with it, they will, but when I've been looking, you know, the president said he felt it was much improved, and I've looked, and I haven't seen him parked on Federal Highway. Maybe they are again, but I was just there the other day.
It's back and forth, like when I was on, you know, I live right across the street there, so is Lulu. So just as I was coming over here, there was a truck parked there. And I understand, they've got customers that rent trucks, they have to leave their car there, they've got trucks, and, you know, you got people, it should be, it should be no U-turn to start with, and there probably shouldn't be anybody parking there. But there's a lot of cars parked there. I called Saturday, and it was from the others, from the north side of the bridge, all the way to the south side of the U-Haul. That's like 150 yards or something, it was just solid cars, but no trucks, no trucks on the weekend.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Mr. McRae.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want you to stay there. As representative for our district, too, where INCA resides, the city manager, myself, Chief Katz, and Mr. Livergood, we are aware of your concerns. We are aware of MLK Boulevard, with the trash on MLK Boulevard. I met with the ministers yesterday, we're trying to get something in place. In regards to the cars parked in there, we have notification from FDOT. Mr. Livergood are probably getting with you all, letting you all know what we have in place. We have not dropped the ball, trust me. We'd like to hear your input, and we've got things moving along. I'm just saying, we did not drop it, but I do appreciate it, because when I pass through now, I don't see those trucks out there, and it looked like they'd be angry because they can't park out there, but I'd be just smiling and be riding, and I said, "Okay, that's good." So we have made great strides, and I've seen a lot of cars, I'm aware of the cars. That's why we try to get FDOT, so they can do some no-parking, as I'm just saying, so we can alleviate some of the problem.
Well, the response is tremendous. They go right out, and every time they go out, they say, "Jeff, I'm sorry to tell you, but there's no infraction." So it is a parking area, I guess they are allowed to park there. The question is, should they be?
Well, the trucks shouldn't park there, because they're stored, they're supposed to be up on their lot.
Okay.
Automobiles, I don't know if you're a customer, I guess you can pull up, I don't know, I'll have to check that out, but, but the trucks shouldn't be parked in the highway.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Piotr Blas, 113 West Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. Okay, so as you can see from my Polish hat, I just came back from Europe again, and I want to share some ideas with you, which I hope will be useful to our beloved Boynton Beach. To begin with, I had the great honor of teaching in my old high school, which is now the number one mathematical and science school in the country. And I was greatly inspired by having wonderful young people who speak, I speak Polish, but they speak English better than me, and 53 of them are Olympians, you know, competing in the Olympics. So it was very inspiring to go, I didn't take any money for this, it was great fun to just go and, and teach the young people. It made me, coming back to Boynton, I developed contacts in Warsaw, and I will share it with the Sister Cities Committee. They're very interested. You know, Warsaw is too big, it's 4 million people. I don't think we need such a big sister, but there is a section of Warsaw about our size where the school is, and Marie Curie is from that section, so perhaps we will work on a sister-city arrangement with them. Poland and United States share, you know, ideals of liberty and freedom and, and, you know, I don't have to explain that to you. Incidentally, Poland is now a free country, and they just had a presidential election. I don't know whether you noticed, the candidate who won, Duda, is very pro-American, and we think, have an even stronger friend there than we ever had. Coming back to Boynton, my thoughts are as follows. As all of us, we keep seeing this building, and we are thinking what to do. I am more convinced than ever, after coming back from Poland, where I visited also the top universities in the country, that Boynton needs to become a university town. I've been saying university city, I've been saying that forever and ever. I've been told that it's too early, but let's not, this is a great city, and I thank you for keeping it wonderful while I go to Poland, but I think in the future, we need to go forward. And one piece of news for Chief Carter, they now developed a Polish company, software that will locate you anywhere in the city, you press a button, 911 calls, and you can be saved or located, such, and, not just indoors, but anywhere you are in the city. Maybe Boynton can have that, too, and we can reduce crime. That's the advantage of high-tech. So God bless you, thank you very much.
My name is John Lawrence, Kennesaw Walls Jolier. My address is 515 Sunset Road. I deliver a report today to you that I have stored at http-backslash-backslashinfiniteproject.wordpress.com. I graduated from the University of Florida with a degree in agricultural sciences, food and agricultural services, environmental horticulture, and I went on to investigate with the foundation of the problems we're on this planet and the solution. And doing so, I paddled a boat across the continent, North American continent, and I just returned a three-year, 10-month enterprise from St. Helens to Port Asabe Hill. Make it short, it's a poor us, dam, shedy, flush, toil, et ecoside attempt. The reservoirs are almost full of mud, the dams are at the end of their service, life period, the buildings are all falling down from uncollected rainfall, the flush toilet is an environmental disgrace, as well as a hygienic disaster. And the planet's getting hijacked by those four horn men with genetically-modified food. The GMO food's weaponized, and they grow it at the dam and ditch agricultural sites, so basically, if you eat the GMO food, kill the damn fools with it. That's what they're doing. It's pretty obvious. The solution to the problem is a free-flowing river system, and the best way to solve the problem is have the US Navy undamn the planet, send the characters caught holding the damned car, be a teabag of bill, and get out of national debt and save the world at the same time. I encourage you all here in this town to basically start here. You know, we could save the world from Boynton, we'll make Mecca look like a flea market, a desert, make a lot of money. The best way to undamn the rivers is have the US military do it. The best way to do that is to have me be your leader, your president, and the best way to win the presidency is to make way in vessels with 12 apostulets, six in reserve, and one man. six in reserve, and one man doing a reverse Last Supper presentation. Once again, I give you that idea at Infinity Project on WordPress. What else can I tell you? You know, it's such a short period of time here. 9/11/2001 means denying the levy, 2 mil, you know. Save your own souls. Pull the damn plug yourself. Got a flyer here. Not allowed to present it anywhere in town. People call the police on me everywhere I go. And I got a business card here. Y'all apparently can't read. But if you can, Infinity Project on WordPress. And I thank you for allowing me to present the solutions to the foundations of the problem, free-flowing rivers and collective productive structures, fruit and nuts.
Can leave that with the clerk. You can leave the flyer with the clerk, and she'll distribute it to us. Right there. Right there. Anyone else wish to address the commission this time? Item's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will close the public audience and go to administrative. Appointments to be made. I think we have two this evening. Have one for the Employee Pension Plan Board of Trustees. Vice Mayor Casello has the appointment. It's a regular appointment, and the applicant is Lynda Cross.
So moved.
Second. Most second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous. Second one is to the Library Board. Commissioner McCray has the appointment. It's a regular appointment, and the applicant is Alicia Roundtree.
So moved.
Second.
Most second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous. Takes us to the consent agenda, and the item F was pulled by the Vice Mayor. Approve the recommendations of the Community Development Block Grant Review Committee for funding activities in preparation for the city Boynton Beach One-Year Action Plan for fiscal 2015-2016. The anticipated community development block grant allocation is $472,711. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I understand where the funds come from. I understand what they're there for. But I was, I was going through the backup material, and there's a lot of programs that this money can be used for. And on the public services, I see one of services for the homeless. Do we generate any money for that?
Good evening, Commissioner Nancy Byrne, Development Director. Octavia Shirad is right behind me, so if I screw up, she'll tap me on the shoulder and correct me. It can be used for homeless aid. It can be used for outsourcing services. It can be used for transitional housing. We really should partnership with the county in their greater homeless effort. We had no applicants come forward to provide homeless services. What you have are the applicants that applied for the money in the packet tonight.
Okay, so this is my question. If we have a homeless individual here in Boynton Beach, and we, we stop and they say, "I have no place to go," what does the city of Boynton Beach do with that individual?
It after, it after no. I love my boss. And she's doing fantastic job. Octavia Shirad, Community Development Manager, Community Improvement Manager. We participate, they're, they're in, with the consolidated plan that we do every five years. There are certain requirements that we have to do. And homeless, in addressing homelessness, which is an eligible activity under the Community Development Block Grant Program. However, our allocation would never be sufficient enough to address a homeless issue here in, here in our city. So what we do is we participate in what's called the Continuum of Care. We keep on hand, and we partner with the different private agencies and agencies that are funded through other federal dollars, county-wide. So what we do is we, whenever we participate, we've, I've served on several boards throughout the county to help divvy up larger portions of monies that are available to address those issues. And as Nancy has said, we've never had an agency that has come to us and applied for any kind of assistance. So we, we send people as they're needed, and they have to be eligible for other agencies. They have to meet their requirements because they address alcoholism, mental illness, drug addiction, drug addictions. All of those are under the umbrella, which is inclusive, inclusive of why people are homeless. So we address homeless in other areas. Our big, our major concern is we help to prevent homelessness for families as well.
I think his question was, if you've got a homeless person, what do you do with them? I think we transport them to a county agency, do we not?
As fast as we can, if we are, if we are involved with it.
So basically, what you're telling me, we don't have per se a homeless shelter where somebody, where maybe a facility with six, half a dozen beds or whatever, where you could pick this individual up and they could stay the night and get a HUD shower and a bed?
No.
We have no place like that in Boynton Beach. What we do is we pick them up and we ship them out to Palm Beach County.
We don't ship them to Palm Beach County. They, they have to do screening. They have to be assessed.
What if they say, what if we pick a homeless person up tonight at 2:00 in the morning? He says, "I have to stay here. I have no place to go." What do we do with that individual?
We have no program for it.
No program for it?
Chief, Mayor, if I, yeah.
Let's do the police department.
That's something I'm gonna need the police department to address. You know, if they're willing and interested, there are county services available, and we will refer, we will transport. I believe we transport.
Well, that's what I want, that's what I want to know. What do we do tonight?
I believe we, we transport them if they're willing to go.
If they're consenting adults, we cannot force them.
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Well, wait a minute. Let's see what Chief has to say.
That's okay.
Hi, Jeff Katz, Police Chief. The topic we're talking about are homeless.
What do you do with a home, if a homeless guy, you pick him up 2:00 in the morning? What do you do with him?
If, we don't provide transportation services to persons unless it's in an official capacity. We have a couple of issues. If, if we run across someone who's residentially challenged, if they are, we believe that they have an issue with substance abuse, we may marchman act them, in which case they would go to the Palm Beach County Jail. If we believe that they have a mental illness and that they're a danger to themselves or other, we may take them into custody under a Baker Act. And that would be for up to a 72-hour evaluation, mental health evaluation. If they simply don't have a home, that's obviously not a crime. And we can refer them to resources. In fact, just yesterday, we identified a homeless person coordinator within the department, and we're gonna work on establishing a resource list and information that we can pass out to persons who are homeless.
Do we have any idea if we even have a homeless problem here in Boynton Beach?
Oh, we certainly do. You know, it's, this is a great place to live, and even people that don't have homes want to come here. And we see people that, that frequent our parks. And of course, there are residents that live near these parks that have concerns because, you know, if you're, if you're homeless, you're, obviously, you're not showering, and you don't have bathroom facilities. And so there are things that come with homelessness that residents don't like. So.
Well, I've observed personally a couple of tents down there off Federal and some of those empty lots down there. These funds that we get from the CDVG, no agencies come forward and says, "Listen, we'd like to set up," like, I think, and I'm a little naive on it, but I think Palm Beach County, West Palm rather, has a program now where they've gotten some of the housing, empty housing, vacated housing, and they've actually letting these homeless people use these to get up and go and get back on their feet. Is that something like an, I know we can't do it, but is that something like an agency could come into Boynton Beach and ask for some of that fund money that we get from there? And say, "Look, and I'd like to set up, God, we got enough sober homes. Why can't we have a couple of homeless homes for the, you know, if we do have a problem here?"
I gotta tell you, it seems somewhat unfair, especially with all the foreclosures and everything. There are so many homes that are empty. And, and you run into an interesting paradox, because the more hospitable you are to those that are homeless, the more homeless you draw to your community. And so you, so you run into a challenge. And we've, we've really just taken the stance that we're gonna identify resources that we can help these, how we can help these individuals and move them on to wherever it is that, that would, that would assist them. In terms of developing homeless camps or something of that nature, that's not something that is our, in our plan, at least in the police department.
Maybe we can talk about that in one of our strategic planning sessions, maybe, you know, start on the ground floor. I firmly believe that, you know, people down on their luck need a break, and other than being, you know, mentally ill or alcoholic, sometimes they just don't have a job for whatever reasons. And I think we need these kind of facilities. You know, we have all kinds of, for the mental health, the mayor runs a great program for the mental, for the mental health and such. So, you know, I think that's something we've got to sit down and have that discussion.
Certainly. And there are many faith-based programs throughout the, throughout South Florida that, that support the homeless individuals. And so I think it's something we definitely could look at in strategic planning.
Thank you. Nancy, why I have you up here, and I was reading at the bottom here, that 20%, $94,000 used for administration for the funds, and only, we spend $94,000 on administration, and only $70,000 goes back to, how come we spend so much on administration?
It pays the salary for your staff.
Okay.
It, it, it's a lot of work. They have to do monitoring of these.
It's a lot of money.
It's, it's a lot of work, though. When you look at the grant recipients here, they have to get monitored on a regular basis. You have finance staff working on this. You have community improvement staff working on this. So it's fair for the city to take reimbursement for the staff time that you're putting into the program.
If I may clarify, that this $94,000 does not begin to cover the administrative staff that goes into administering the program.
It does not.
It does not.
They are covered partly out of the general fund. The city contributes to their salary, which again is why when you're talking about the city taking on the role of social services, we will discuss that in strategic planning. I don't think you want to go there because then you have to fund staff that's going to service that agency that you set up, which is why the program is designed the way it is, where agencies come to us, who are already established, and then we give them the grant funds necessary to provide the services to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Merker.
You know, what I'm hearing, it's the heart and soul of a human being, and that's what Vice Mayor Casello was portraying. However, there's rules and there's regs. And the format of the state with the county and the city has to co-mingle to get an answer. You know, people are complaining right now about sober homes. Homeless people, there's, as the chief said, there's issues too. So it's not something that's simple black and white issue. It's a complex issue. And you just don't charge into saying, "I'm doing this, that, or that." It's statewide, it's countywide, and it's citywide issues. So you have to know the rules and regs. Can things be amended? Yeah, I'm for a lot of amendments, but it doesn't happen. So you just don't charge into it because you think it's a good thing. Look at what the question is. And Vice Mayor Casello said it just before, and he's said it before. And again, sober homes. So sober homes, homeless homes, before you charge, know the rules and the regs, and make sure that the people also, the people of the city, are concerned and interested in doing this or not doing it. So it's not so simple.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McCray.
Thank you. Since it was brought up about homeless individuals, Broward County, they have a facility that's ran by the county for homeless individuals. They also have down there the Salvation Army. Okay? And when we say that we want to start looking to, trying to bring individuals and starting something new in Boynton, you know, we need to kind of be cognizant of what it's going to attract because if we start opening up, saying that we have a place for homeless individuals, I'm not trying to be facetious, but Delaware individuals are gonna start coming down, and Lake Worth are gonna start coming down and saying, "Let's get to Boynton by a certain time. We got a place to lay down." So we need to be cognizant, when we start bringing programs, let's make sure we get all the ramifications. I see it in Broward County. I see them congregating to the Salvation Army before 6:00 that I could check in. I'm just saying. But the county program would be a better program so everybody could say, "We got one facility, Boynton. This is where we would take your homeless individuals."
And there are, there are several programs in Palm Beach County that address homeless.
I just think everyone needs a place to lay their head down at night.
Well, I agree with you, but they, like I say, the county already has facilities for that. We just need to work with them. You have to be careful, be careful what you ask for, just, and I heard something here going about West Palm having houses where they're putting these homeless people in. And somebody said, "Well, you got these empty houses sitting around." Well, if the, if your neighbor's house went into foreclosure and they left, God forbid, you wouldn't want to be filled up with homeless people next door to you. So you have to be careful how you approach this. Be careful what you ask for. But there is county agencies that I think we need to work with, because you're right, if there's somebody who's homeless, we need to tell them how to go and where they can go to spend the night.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
We need a vote on that?
Yeah, we're gonna need a motion to approve item F.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion unanimous. Item G, accept second-quarter report on operations of the South Schoolhouse Children's Museum and Learning Center for Fiscal 14-15. Vice Mayor, you pull that.
First and foremost, I'd like to say, you guys, it's 180-degree turnaround. You guys are doing a great, great job over there. I was looking at some of the numbers here, and the gross revenue for 1415 was $127,000 some odd cents, and expenses for FY 1415 were 120, a little over $123,000. I'm not good in spelling, but math tells me that's not a, that's less probably than $3,000 in the black. Would I be correct in saying that?
Craig Clark, Library Director, and I'm also a board member of the Schoolhouse Children's Museum and the Boynton Cultural Center. The expenses, the revenues were higher due to the, partially due to the fact that the city has supported them much better this year. I can tell you that a lot more income is coming in. Suzanne's doing a phenomenal job. Her energy is, is, she's tireless. And the expenses, let's see. There are a lot of more expenses this quarter because of one of the events that was put on a couple, a few months ago. That's partially due to why the expenses were a bit higher this quarter.
I probably caught you, Suz, because she's usually here, and she's not tonight.
Yeah.
So it's probably unfair to you. But, so just, we'll sum it up by saying, are we gonna be okay this year? Are we gonna end up in the black?
Uh.
As far as your projection?
Yes.
It's very close here in the second quarter. What do you predict the third and fourth quarter? You figure more revenue?
Summertime, heavy programming.
Yeah, there's a lot of heavy, yeah. I suspect it's gonna be much better than it was last year.
Okay, we'll wait for the third quarter before.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm sure you'll be happy.
I just wanted to know if there was anything that we, as commissioners, the city could, you know, to help? Because you guys have been doing everything, I think, possibly, physically possible that you can do there. You're doing a great job. Appreciate that. You know, if any more that we can do than what we've done?
Definitely.
Then we need to know.
Definitely.
All right, thank you.
How do you have it broken down in your thought process?
When originally she came before us, obviously, the first year is always a, call it a technical year, a difficult year. But have you broken it down, or has she broken it down into a year plan, to a three-year plan, and then it's just rolling like a business?
We're working on a long-range planning process right now. We're kind of doing it bit by bit, but there will be a long-range plan coming forth probably in the next few months. And there'll probably be some more discussion about that at the budget hearings.
Because that's, that's where you're going to hope to allocate, get, receive funding to expand.
And we did a one-year and a three-year, and that was submitted to the commission with the increased budget request last year, to definitely have a business model and a business plan in place. And it's successful to date.
Yeah, yeah. I agree. Thank you.
Is there a motion on item G?
So, second.
Motion second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to bids and purchases, over $100,000. Proposed resolution R 1506-2, approval award of the bid for the Boynton Beach City Hall restroom accessibility modifications to Hartzell Construction, Inc. of Pompano Beach, Florida, and authorized city manager to sign a contract in the amount of $104,512, and authorize a 10% contingency for a total amount of $114,963.20. This is to redo the restrooms in the lobby to, to meet the handicap state requirements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
I'd like, Madam Mayor, if you, if you know, what have we spent already for these, for the, to accommodate the Disability Act? I know we just did the front of our city hall. That was quite an expense. Oh, Jeff.
And some improvements in the West Wing.
Jeff Lirigood, Director of Public Works and Engineering. I wasn't prepared to answer the question, but I do know that when we started this endeavor for the HUD process, we estimated around $300,000 total would be spent. I know that we've exceeded that as a result of some construction pricing increase. We can get you an exact number there.
Oh, no, no, but this is something we're mandated by law, obviously.
As you make improvements to buildings, yes, through general. A lot of this work is mandated by our agreement with HUD to provide, use federal dollars to provide the HUD programs. So anybody that has access to city hall, restrooms on this level, restrooms on the second floor of the West Wing, and a number of other improvements that we've made are all associated with that program, and we've used a lot of those dollars for these improvements.
All right, thank you.
Now, we have, in 2010, we were given five years to, to get these things handicap accessible. And here we are in 2015, and we're trying to catch up. And unfortunately, we're in a bad position of having to put money in the city hall that we don't know whether we're staying here or not. So it's, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard spot. But these are things we have to do at this time, like it or not, according to state policy. Is there a motion?
No move.
Exactly. I think we already made that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to city manager report, provide policy input to staff regarding future afterlife municipal services to include cemetery burials, cremains, cremains, and mausoleum internet.
Good evening. Again, Jeff Lirigood, Director of Public Works and Engineering. Tonight, I pledge to you no bad puns. We...
I can't hear you.
As part of the city's strategic plan, we've identified a need to evaluate our afterlife or our cemetery services for our community. We've known for a number of years that our cemeteries are reaching their capacity, and in fact, Boynton Beach Memorial Park Cemetery at Wilbright and Seacrest, we have reached capacity for single burial plots. We have a number of plots that have been sold in advance, people waiting to enter, roughly 1,200 of those. We have an additional cemetery at Sarah Sims Park that's available. But to evaluate it, we've, we prepared a report for commission consideration, and we have four specific recommendations that we would like for the commission to consider. First, with respect to cemetery lands for the traditional burials. To continue cemetery operations for many, many years into the future, the lands that we have now, the two locations, will no longer suffice to provide those types of services for many years. In order to continue to provide burial services for five years, 10 years, 30 years, or 50 years, it'll be necessary to acquire land. That's land outside of the borders or the boundaries of these two locations. We've had many discussions on a commission level about selling land, purchasing land for other endeavors. And we all know that land has an incredible value in Palm Beach County, particularly as the economy changes. When you consider cemeteries and how they became to exist, in some of my research, I thought it was interesting to find that in the late 1890s to the 1900s, as the cemeteries first started arriving and the need for them, certain clubs or organizations took responsibility. They would buy, or they, they would just get five acres on the south end or the west end of the town, and it would just be the local municipal cemetery for a small town of 200 people, or 500 people, or whatever. And that, that worked very well for many years as, as not a public endeavor, not as a public responsibility for burial of people within Palm Beach County. It wasn't until the 1950s that a lot of these organizations no longer existed and looked to government to provide that perpetual care. Because once you have a cemetery, you have a responsibility to continue to maintain that cemetery, the turf, the grounds, just the general for, for any loved ones that may choose to visit. And so it's interesting that government took a lot of those responsibilities to maintain those cemeteries. In many cases, in some of the communities, governments found that the records were so very poor on the, the burials over, over the decades, that they were virtually impossible to continue burials because of the poor records.
Mr. Lirigood, excuse me just a second, if I can just interrupt you for a second, because there's four things we want to give you guidance on here.
Yes.
And what you're telling us is really in the back up here.
Yes.
I've read it all. So you're basically verbatim...
Okay. I didn't know how much you wanted me to do for the public benefit.
I understand, but I think we need to move it along.
Okay.
I will tell you right off where I am on the four things and see where the commission wants to go with them. The first one is to, to not expand the existing platted boundaries. In other words, we'll keep the two cemeteries we have, the, the one on Wilbright there and Sarah Sims, but we're not going to go buy any land and make a new cemetery somewhere. That, that's what I would recommend. We don't expand that. However, we do re, on the second one, I would like to replat the memorial park, the one on Wilbright and Sarah Sims, because I understand there's roads there that no longer need to be used.
Thank you.
There's some buildings that don't need to be used.
Correct.
We can take them, and we can add a lot more plots, so we'll have more cemeteries to do. So I'm okay with that. So don't, don't expand the existing, replat the stuff to see what else, how many more we can get. And then I, there's a recommendation, I would like to make a recommendation that we prepare an ordinance to dis, dissolve the cemetery board, because the cemetery board has very little to do anymore. We've had, if you go back in their history, they've had very little stuff to have, and it's been said that the staff could really, they say it takes a lot of time and effort to do the meetings, to do the minutes, and staff can really take on whatever has to be discussed. So the cemetery board has, excuse, especially, I'll live their, their necessity. And the fourth one is to prepare resolutions, prepare residents to, to read, the residents, keep the, the cemeteries, the new ones we have, or whatever we have left, they would be restricted to people who live in Boynton Beach, or to prior intermed people or families that have people already buried there, that we would be open to that. But, 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 so we wouldn't have people from Boca or Delaware coming buying up our plots.
That's policy decision for the commission.
So I would say that we should keep it to our residents. And then the last one would be rules, do, prepare, prepare rules for the care and operations. The city would present us a new thing of rules and operations, how we're going to run the cemetery, which needs to be looked at, because they've been, so that's, that's the four things. Yeah, let's start with him, go right down line.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I concur with what you said, you know, and I'm, you know, I spoke to you about replating Boynton Beach Memorial Cemetery. And Mayor, you know, after Commissioner Merker probably finishes his spiel, you know, I can all go ahead and offer a recommendation that we go ahead and give them guidance with what you have already said. That's the way Boynton needs to go.
Mr. Merker.
Well, my spiel, I don't think is a spiel. I think it's a factual question. The question is, if you're going to redesign or fix up, I, I would like to have a number, because what you said, and I'm paraphrasing what you said, you're looking into five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, and even 50 years. So I, I would like to know approximately what the number would be if we resurrect the areas that we have, because my question is, even if we do this, is it truly enough for five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, and 50? And I would assume it is not. And if I'm right, then therefore, we have to look beyond our nose and say, "What do we do?"
That's what the rules will come back, and they'll tell us.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because it wasn't stated.
Yes, he did.
It was just saying, we're fixed, excuse me. It's, we were saying replanted, but just because you replant it, you have to have numbers.
You're going to have X amount, yeah.
Well, it has to be stated.
You don't know.
That's all.
You won't know until they replant it.
Like I said, it's, the rhetoric isn't rhetoric, it's simple math.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Well, even if you try to pick up a few abandoned roads and, and odd lots here and there, it's not going to provide that many more. So I would think instead, what about mini mausoleums? Like, you know, if they're back-to-back, that'd be about 15 feet wide. You stack three high, that's 10 feet high, four feet apart. You know, you could do, you know, like, we have mausoleums, they're, they're very big, but why not, you know, you pick out a size of, you know, the golden triangle kind of shape and, and puts, put those up and condolize.
There's, pardon me, there's, there are alternatives for the southwest quadrant where we currently store material. I think I referenced in the report that as we get to the point, that decision will need to be made in several years as to whether we wish to expand mausoleum services or go into burials in that location. And that would be the, the location that you could do that, I believe.
What I'm saying is you could have small ones, like 20 by 10, or 20 by 15, or, you know, spread out around where you have smaller, you know, not large contiguous areas, just...
Possibility we could consider that as we replant.
Vice Mayor.
We, we don't know how many lots we'd pick up until the replant's done with the roads and such, and that's...
We've done some estimates. We think we might get around 300, but it could vary...
But that's minimum, that's minimum.
Yes.
Let me ask you this. Do you think that the city should be in the cemetery business?
As a resident of the city or as a staff member?
No, the answer's the same for both, I bet.
Yeah, I, I think that it's, it's an, it's a, a public service that I think is very costly, particularly as you buy land, and I think it's going to take resources from other services to the community. I think that the private sector offers afterlife services. There are alternatives for people and, and for their families. I think that that's...
And Jeff, do we, this is not a money-making operation by no stretch of the imagination, is it?
Not hardly.
Not hardly. It's an expense to the city.
Our, our primary concern is, is to cover our existing costs of burials and to make sure that we have a decent trust fund for the perpetual care.
I would, I would have a tendency to go with the mayor's recommendations.
And, and let me just jump in here. Mr. Lirigood, you just said what needs to be said, a trust fund, no matter if the city go out and say, "We're not going to do burials anymore." We have a trust fund, we have a fiduciary responsibility to those individuals who are buried there, and we got to take care of them. And I'm just saying, and started putting up little mini mausoleums and stuff like that. I'm just saying, we need to plant out first. I'm just saying, you know, we don't want to disfigure what we already have. We have one big one. I'm just saying, they're going to come back and say, "What is Boynton trying to do?" I think I am more liberal to say about, you know, how to get spaces, like I met with you and told you, and that is the way. And the mayor has summed everything up, and I'm just saying, we get 300 more when we run out of space, wrap the business.
Right. Is that the direction you need?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Next one is Resolution 1506-3, approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Palm Beach County Police Benevolent Association, police officers and detectives, and the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Yes. My discussion is that I need to say to the officers and the families and everything, I want to tell you all, it has been a long haul. I know we did not satisfy everybody. Some people went away, they're still dissatisfied, but we want to at least say thank you all for meeting us where you all should have met us, we felt, and we met you all. At least we got a comparable, you know, settlement now, and we can go back and do what we do best, and that is take care of the citizens of Boynton. I'm ready to vote, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Proposed Resolution 1506-4, approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Palm Beach County Police Benevolent Association, police sergeants, and the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Proposed Resolution 1506-5, approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Palm Beach County Police Benevolent Association, police lieutenants, and the city. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to legal.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Before we go to legal, let's go to unfinished business. I just need to address Sarah Sims Park. You know, I should have had it placed on there, but I really want to say to staff, you know, thank you all. I know that the playground equipment is going in now. I know that we have one individual who went out and already started complaining before it's even, has ever been finished. And I'm, I'm just saying, you know, thank you for your due diligence. Stay on target, no matter what they say. Once it's completed, we will be satisfied. We will be satisfied. The members in district, too, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought, I did get that complaint. I drove over the day and looked at it, and they're just beginning.
That's all.
They can't even tell what's going to be there yet.
Yeah.